From someplace connected. But.
All the Hockenham zoning board of review meeting to order. Could all stand for a moment of silence in salute to the flag?
Congratulations, United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, literate, just for all.
Alright. Okay. Welcome, everyone. We have a big crowd out there. We have petition one is to determine completeness and consider waivers for a petition for special use permit filed by Shannon Paquin. With that does a point three Woody Hill Road, Valley, Rhode Island, zero two eight three two for property owned by Shannon Paquin and Daniel Manning located at forty-three Woody Hill Road, Valley, Rhode Island, zero two eight three two. Identified as assessing's flat seventeen lot twenty-three B. It's in an RFR eighty zone filed in accordance with section eight C and ten of chapter one thirty-four of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hockenham as amended. Oh, so Shannon, tonight, we're going to review a checklist. Go over, make sure that we have all the paperwork we need for hearing next month, which would be what they. The October fifteenth. That looks like it's on October fifteenth, so. See how we make out. Got everything, we'll be ready to roll. When you're ready. Joe's going to read through the list and we'll do a lot of talking. If we have any questions, we'll reach out. Well, first checklist item A is free copies of a site. Prepared by and signed by a stamp professional engineer, professional land surveyor, the scale of north and one inch forty feet. There's a note here that says please waive our survey. Has to was to a scale of one to thirty feet. And then the forty. I don't think that needs a waiver. We have a better, a better site plan. So if somebody would make a motion to accept as. Make a motion. There you go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, looks good. Oh, yeah, you well, you, yeah, now let's get into the detail of the detail of the pay. Name and address of property owners. Date, North Arrow, graphic scale, lot dimensions and area. Flat, lot, zoning districts and setbacks. Existing and proposed structures in the relationship and distances from lot boundary lines. There's no proposed additional structure. Existing and proposed parking areas, walkways. No additional parking areas. Existing streets, nine-one-one addresses, wells and septic systems. List of names and addresses of all property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. Last right of A is any peculiar site conditions or features. So long. Okay, make a motion that checklist item A is complete. Second, second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Checklist item B. Three copies of a separate map, including all property owners to the two hundred feet of the subject property and/or all those property owners and entities with required notice. In your section of forty-five, twenty-four fifty-three of our G. As the man, we're going to link down the names. Alright, so. That's alright, yeah.
Yeah. Number nineteen. Yeah, it's not seventeen lot nineteen.
You're okay. Right, next nineteen. Twenty-three, twenty-three B. That's the subject property, believe me?
Yes.
Twenty-three B is the subject. Twenty-three H. Twenty. Yep. Twenty-three C. On the side. Twenty-three K. Okay. Twenty-three itself. Yeah. Twenty-three two. It's a.
Yeah, it's right here.
Is twenty-one a possibility just from that? It's, it's real close there.
Even three.
No.
It's seventy-seven hundred and thirty-three feet.
Well, it's just, yeah.
It's, it's.
Gotcha. Alright, I'll make a motion that checklist item B is complete. For a second, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, C has a waiver request. Yeah. Make a motion, we waive checklist item C?
Which one is C?
D is soil erosion and groundwater control. Okay, Joe's got a motion on that.
Aye.
We've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
G is also calling for a waiver, a letter from a biologist.
There's no one right there. I make a motion that.
For the second.
Aye.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Checklist item E's location of existing septic system.
Not a plan.
Was on the plans. Make a motion checklist item E is complete. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ask for a waiver again on the traffic study checklist. Second. The motion.
What, what's, what's, what's the motion?
The traffic. Except the waivers.
Because of the limited volume? Is that what they're thinking?
Um, from the note that's attached to the, to the application, um, it looks like they're trying to put in a. Kind of a doggy daycare training facility for, for three dogs at a time. Um. I wouldn't think that that would be a high traffic.
Like, don't make one way down.
Entity. Yeah, it's got a, it's got a horseshoe shaped driveway. So, I mean, I don't think that there's going to be a traffic issue with the, with the volume of the call.
The greatest of all the last few years.
True.
Alright, I'm fine with it.
Um, so.
I'll second Joe's.
Alright, we got a motion from Joe, second. Dan. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Also requesting a waiver for item G, separate site plan indicate existing proposed pottery. Joe's got a motion, second. So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Checklist item H is the last one on the list and it's noted as existing well. It's, it's not a waiver request. They're just, they're just stating that it's there.
There.
I don't think that the, the use is gonna. That the proposed use is going to change the, the well, quantity or quality, and it's normal for homes to have multiple two, three dogs. I mean, it's doesn't seem excessive. So if somebody.
I make a motion to waive checklist item H.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So that being said, could I again have somebody entertain a motion that the checklist is complete?
So. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think everything is here that we need, so you should be good. Um, next, we got a, next month, we'll have a meeting on the fifteenth. At seven, um, she's got to send out green cards. You're going to send out certified letters. Um, to your neighbors that be on the abutting list. You can reach out to the, the building official. They can help you with that process if you have any questions. So, um, one of the members has just had a question they want to, they're going to ask at the hearing, so just prepare for that.
If, if I sit for the hearing, obviously you went a great distance speaking to the noise issue. Obviously, I'm, I'm going to presume that the neighbor would be concerned about those types of things. I'd be particularly interested to see how you plan on dealing with the waste management. You don't have to answer it now, but just be prepared that that would be a question I would ask at the hearing if I sit on the board. I'm only an alternate, so I may not be here. Okay?
He's not only an alternate.
No, there is.
No, but, no, he's just, he's just, he's just trying to be courteous. If, if the question comes out here, we just want to make sure they're prepared, not, not hit with a curveball. Okay, so, um, except we can reach out to, to the, the building official and, um, if, if you need some help with the, the certified letters and stuff. We got to get them back before they're, what, two weeks before the meeting? Just, alright, they gotta, they gotta be come back. They go back by, so, but it's better to get them out sooner than later. Um, I don't want to delay because if we don't have them. Okie dokie. Alright, yeah, well, we'll see you next month. Alright, so we'll move on to the big show. Alright, so petition two is a hearing. It's a petition for special use permit filed by Michael LaChapelle with mailing address Peel Box one four zero three Wesley, Rhode Island, zero two eight nine one. For property owned by Kenneth Adams located at thirteen Oak Street, Ashway, Rhode Island, zero two eight zero four, identified as assessing's flat twenty-four lot thirty-seven. It's an NR one zone filed in accordance with sections eight C and ten of chapter one thirty-four of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hockenham as amended. Welcome, gentlemen. Um, so we. Going to have, Mike, are you going to speak on behalf of, of the owner? Okay, well, he can if he'd like, but. Usually we get you to step up to the podium, but I think we can be applying now. Now, could go to the podium? Okay, now we need you on the speaker, so come on up to the podium and just identify yourself for the record.
This is all. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Awesome. Hi, I'm Mike LaChapelle. Reside at thirteen Oak Street, Ashway. Um, Kenneth Adams is the owner that I will be representing. Can you still, can you hear me? You know what I think though?
We're more than six feet away, we're good.
Cool. Hey, I'm Mike LaChapelle. Uh, I reside at thirteen Oak Street in Ashway. I'm representing Kenneth Adams, the owner of thirteen Oak Street in Ashway.
So, uh, what, you're proposing a. A new garage?
Yes, with an additional second story.
Okay, so, um, this was, I'm trying to remember what from last, last meeting. So you're using the existing footprint?
Yes.
Um, redoing the, the garage and the, the foundation?
Yes.
And then you're going to go up a story?
I am.
Um, the second story is going to be used for?
The whole, the whole building is going to be used for storage. Um, we don't have any closets in that old house and, uh. I'm still redoing the foundation interior of the house, so it's not watertight just yet, so I can't really store anything in the basement either.
This is a, this is a standalone garage. It's not attached, right?
Detached.
The detached garage?
Yes.
This is, yeah, I don't know. You guys have any questions for him? Seems pretty strange.
Anything utilities other than electricity that be to the garage?
One more time?
Anything utilities even falls into the garage other than electricity?
No.
Water?
Uh, many, many split through the, those are. Yeah, many, just for storage purposes, if I need to store food in there or something.
But as far as water?
No, nope.
But how intended to be living space?
No living space at all.
And I think the footprint's actually is bigger than what's there, right? The footprint that's being proposed is actually bigger than what's there right now. All is the same.
There's a, there's a garage there with like a, like a big shed attached to the back, um, same, same structure. It looks like they built it at the same time, just. One, one piece doesn't have a foundation.
So, like, just to clarify, because I'm not, the foundation plan, um, it's sure, it says new, and then there's like an existing piece.
But, yeah, that has an old foundation built on grade.
Okay.
So, and then the existing is just built on the ground, or the other portion is built on the ground.
This, this part, this is new, is just, this is going to replace the existing?
That whole thing, I should have clarified on that. That whole thing will be new foundation.
Okay, but the, the, the overall dimensions of it are?
The same.
Exactly the same, or you're not extending it beyond?
Yep.
Okay, it's not increasing the footprint?
Yeah, just going taller. So I did.
It's like one foot nine on one side. I, I don't. I got to find out.
I did, I did talk to the neighbor about setting a construction fence. Um, he does have children. I am a contractor, so safety is our first concern. Um, so if, when I am digging, I will be setting construction face. In probably about five feet into his property. Yeah, we've already gone. Yeah. You, you're gonna, I'm gonna have to do that, so we, we have talked about that.
Is he here for anything, or just? As long as he's on board.
He was notified. He's not present. We haven't. Oh, is this, is this somebody on there? It's, uh, looks like the neighbor on that side is Cassius Spears.
Yeah.
He's not present. We don't, we don't see him on the online.
Is that house actually, is that sold or is that pending or is that?
Uh, I've seen Cassius over there unloading stuff, so. Um, I'm not sure what's going on exactly. I know they're, they were trying to sell it.
So I just, I just don't want to see a problem.
Of course. Yeah.
Need the other, just to, need the chair. You know, you have to one hour fire it back.
Yeah, we spoke about that. That was me.
Unless you can bring the spat to show that just cut off.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to fire it every.
That's fine.
I don't know how you, I just don't understand how you can build this without impacting the neighbor. I just don't understand. I mean, equipment wise, anything, I, I just, I'm not really sure. You know, how that would happen.
I think in the construction segment of the, of the build, yes, um, they're on one point two acres. And I obviously have that little sliver, so if they agree to give me five more feet for the duration of a, a month building period and every safety precautions are met, I think it's a. I think it's a win-win. I think that's being pretty neighborly. Um, as impacting of like view, um, I told them I'm not putting windows on that right side, so I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about what, I'm not concerned about actually physically using the app. You know what I mean? I, I would, I would, I would, uh. I'd like to know if, well, I guess my question to you is if the neighbor doesn't agree. To allow you to step foot on their property with your equipment, can you still build?
Sure. Um, I don't see. Where I'd have to be on their property with equipment. Like, I can, I'm able to get a mini excavator up and around the pool, um. Building material can stay in the driveway.
Sure.
And then if I had to give them a schedule of values for the site, or anyone a schedule of values for what we plan on doing on the site, um, that's fine too, so they have a timeline of where we're at as well. And all those can be mess.
The possible thing? To do that, like, if the neighbor wasn't on board?
It's basically a civil issue, in my opinion, um. It happens a lot. Usually you go to the neighbor and ask permission or tell them, how the landscape is unfinished, you know, at least you have our side. It's a common practice.
It makes it more convenient if you can go over there if, if Cassius is in. You know, agreement to allow you to do it. That's a discussion you'd have to have. I, it's a twelve foot width to that. I think the mini excavator can probably haul most of that out of there without even going on the property.
Yeah, same.
So close, though, you got to wonder about things undermining.
It's just getting brush away, they get down forty-two inches of ground.
Right, so.
And the port of footing, huh? You have to go at least six inches over the side, so now you can six inches.
Right, right. Not, yeah, I mean, um, but.
And that doesn't include area to work.
I think like Tony said, it's, it's more of a civil issue. It's, he's. He's replacing the existing structure with, with the same footprint. Um, I don't necessarily think that it's something that the board would deny.
Mike, I got a question for you. Any reason why you can't keep this over a couple of feet into the property? It looks like you've got a pool there, it's a ground hole.
I can, but I was, I was told by, I mean, this is my first time going for a variance, so I was told, don't ask for any more than what you have. So if I had to go left, I'd be more than happy to. If I, if I could go back, I'd love that. If I could go forward, I, I'd love that. But I, I wasn't sure, I didn't want to do something and then ask for forgiveness later, so I just kind of stayed within the boundaries.
That, that would put him into a variance.
So I just have to variance, yeah. So see if what?
I'm so none.
I mean, then, then a special use, I mean, does he, is this for both? It's just for special use. This is just for special use. He's not in for a variance. If, if he got off of that footprint, even though he's making it less non-conforming, it's still maybe with a variance. It's going, it's going in the opposite direction of where we normally work. Normally, we're getting closer to, now we're going, which is a better circumstance. Um.
I, I just, I, I agree now with that property, it's actually, it even been made, I'm not sure if that's years.
You're not sure he owns it? Um.
Was, who's the notified?
Notify the, I mean, it's the person that's on record. That's all he can do.
No, I know it's all he can do. I'm not, yeah, I just, he's coming back to us in a couple of months when he starts digging up their pages, they like. By doing a proper.
I agree with Dan. I think it was an ideal if that agreement was in place.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Then, if it was in writing and it was documented, I think that, that would make it a lot easier on us and answer that level of uncertainty, because then it would be able to miss the fears, to disclose that information to the new buyer.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, some, you know, I agree with Dan, I agree with Dan. You get someone to write or someone to say, hey, this person can work five feet on property, something like that, that kind of covers it.
And also sometimes they mitigate it back on it, where it was, it was a building, you're not going to make. Burn it, it's one way or the other.
So is the, the consensus from the board that, um, if, if he can get permission from the existing owner on that side? To construct this without any reservations or even, you know, use some of the property, um, to, to, to build it, then the board would. Be in agreement. I mean, I, it doesn't seem like anybody has any apprehension based on what he's doing other than that property. Right, you know, or if he has to come back, would the board be more inclined to have him get a variance and kick that thing closer to the pool? It's still pretty tight to the pool. I mean, I don't, you know, if it was my property, I'd still want to be able to get vehicles between the garage and the pool. I don't know that, that dimension between there, but it doesn't seem like it's very wide.
You have, uh.
Twelve feet, or ten feet, because it's the weather of the garage.
On the, sorry, on the back end, you probably have, if you were to set a tractor through it, probably two feet on each side, so you don't have a lot, so I would like to get some piece of equipment back there if I had to.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, that's the issue I see if he does kick it closer to the pool. Not going to be able to get it back.
Septic and leach fields on the other side, um, so I can't really run anything heavy on that side, especially if I had to make a repair.
So it's a bowling alley lot. I mean, it's kind of typical of what we see, and it, it's very limited on, on both sides of that property. The other side, it looks like a little bump out addition. There's not much room on that. They're going to be surprised. Right?
You got, uh, nine feet to the property line there.
Well, that's, I mean, that's something, that's kind of the angle I'm coming at, is, is, is the use is the same exact use. He's using the same footprint, um, he's just going, he's going higher. He's still within the height requirements. Um, I don't have any reservations on my end. Granted, in special, I understand where you guys are coming from. Um, but I do, I think that that's something that the neighbor would have to, you know, um, bring up. I mean, if he doesn't want him on the property, the point is, this is a civil issue. That, that will put, put it to the wall. And, um.
May I ask if you're questioning the certification? If you're questioning the notice, if you truly believe that that's not the record owner?
Um, no, not question that. I just, like, I really would have preferred to have to let our property, body owner here and just agree with that.
But if he was properly lost, then he fails to.
Yeah.
To complain or show or object.
Alright, I do believe in property change.
Next, we're, these are, I don't know, whatever. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask Liz for her instructions. So, that is a good question. Oh, he's actually doing it right now?
I got everyone, one of these back.
What, Cassius is? So.
If he's enjoying the sale, he would have kind of jumped, he knows.
There has been a lot of people there. I mean, Cassius being one of them. I don't know the rest of the family.
If he sent it and it gets kicked back, yep. It's not, it's, he, he did his due diligence. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but their home records are not updated. Vision appraisal, which is mainly what they go by, can be six months fail. Not even close to updating.
So if you have a question as to if the actual owner, I can notice.
This is checking. Yeah, I hope that will, will.
Right.
So my question would be, um, if the property has changed hands and I meet the new owner and, uh, I write a letter, he signs an agreement, we do the, do a hearing again, or I bring it to the building official?
We just, we would continue the hearing to next month.
Okay.
We just, we just start where we left off.
Sure.
I don't think, I think at that point, we, as a board, we'd be fine with it. I mean, right now, I, I said, I, I still think it's the property owner's right to do this. It's difficult on you.
Season contractor, I got it.
Yeah, um, it's difficult on you to, to stay on your property, which I, I think you're going to, you know, you're going to wind up undermining that, digging, you might create a headache. Um, and then we'll be back in. Um, and then we'll be back in, we're trying to prevent that for, um.
You're saying undermine it?
No, if, if you, if you upset that other neighbor, we cannot stay on.
Got it.
The owner.
Is there a fence wall on top of it or?
There is.
There is?
There is a fence. Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it would have to come down.
Uh, the built part is on my side.
The old fence?
Yeah, yeah.
That helps.
Would you, would you suggest a certification? Written notice if in fact it is a new one? Like a notarized thing, I am the new one. I didn't notice.
Yeah, I do have those.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was, that, that's not, he's playing.
Well, they, they take the, the rest of the board, and they're trying to save you a future headache.
I hear you.
A big one.
Well, you know, the first call phone, phone's off.
Yeah.
Especially, first call is gonna go to his office, because there's absolutely no way that I can proceed on constructing this without impacting the new property. You have to dig enough space to get over to work inside that, inside that hole, if you're finding a buddy. That takes you, even if you're subsurface, it's still uncooked.
And the reality is that this is replacing a single story garage, or a story, or the doubles, two stories, so neighbors really can't tell. Can't do the dark enough.
How far away is that house, Cassius' house from the garage, approximately, I don't know if it's on the beach.
I don't.
Is it?
There's definitely a shed on there.
Shed, it doesn't show the, the house.
Eight twenty-eight, twenty.
From end of March.
August twenty-eighth, the change man. You're right. When did you send the notice to Cassius?
Well, that's.
Could he amend the application by simply moving notice to the new one and giving enough time?
Oh, I wouldn't, I would have, yeah. So. So, you know, in order to move this.
Send them all on the same day? I'm sorry, I wanted you to send them all out on the same day?
Yes, sir.
Well, what day was that?
I'm looking for the date on here now.
I, I heard from my.
You, you sent them out online?
Yeah. See, the problem, the problem for, the problem, at least for me, I'll speak only for myself. I, I, I don't agree with the chairman in, in the sense that if the property did change hands, as Dan, uh, as Dan called, that means we don't have the, we're actually should know it. So they about us, and it would, it would call into question our approval of, of, of this. I think you're better off postponing your plans for a month and just making sure that it resolves with particular.
I think I agree too, based on, we're both, we're both gonna live there in hopefully harmony, so it needs to be, uh, an equal decision.
Clearly, it's not our business, but you have main issues to tackle and stuff like that, and you're probably more on wrapping up and, you know, and everything's, you know, everything's bound and whatnot.
Yeah, of course.
And in light of the dates of when you sent them and stuff too, it's just the crossover, that sale and everything, now that we have more information with the, with the tax card and.
Yeah.
With the date that was sent out.
No, he didn't get that one.
No, so, that is just, it's a weird crossover, because it got mailed to Cassius, but now he doesn't, he doesn't own it at that, right? We don't necessarily have, he doesn't have the new owner's address, because it's, it's all just, it's just crossing. So I mean, I think I'm, I'm, now I'm more than, than you guys, now that we digest all this, um, and I, um, it's just, well, well, before we get to that point, do you guys have any other questions on a different topic, other than him getting, uh, approval, notice and approval from the, that neighbor?
I don't feel comfortable going forward without that neighbor giving notice, and if that neighbor wants to be present for this discussion, I think that they should be present for the balance of the discussion, I think to finish this thing out, and limited only to noticing the neighbor to offer their input, I think they should do, try the benefit of some of the questions that are, that are asked.
Perfect point. Alright, so you was, you run on through a motion?
I think a motion for the, the second one and talk of the, of, of, you know, it was gonna change hands.
Yep, um, we get a second, second. Any more discussion on? Um, I would, so just to add to what Dan said, is, you know, getting the proper notification out, but even better yet, if you could get, uh, you know, a sort of, or a notarized letter and affidavit from that neighbor saying that they're fine with this.
Sure.
That would help us a ton.
Okay.
Then, that way they don't have to come if they don't have any, any, any issues with it.
Got it.
But if they do, then they. Yes.
If they don't wanna come, so we have to.
Right.
Is the application on file at town hall?
Oh, this is, yes.
So then the new, that new person, you could include that the application is on file in the town hall, and you can come in and view the maps and everything has to be processed well and geared. I think more informed day out of that.
I think I'm just gonna go introduce myself.
There you go. It's the best.
That's the best.
Bring, bring it all the way to the strip.
Yeah. Yeah. What's that? No.
So I was trying to make it nicer than it almost did, if you were on board.
I mean, it's not the best paint job, but exterior wise.
How's the, how's the fence look on that side?
Uh.
The fence in good shape right now?
Sixty years old, and it's, I, I wanted to replace that, it's a good discussion for the owner and I now, I knew, I wanted to replace the old fence regardless, so I can state that while we're doing this as well.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's a nice token to the, to the project too, so they're gonna fix this fence up and make it look nicer, so it'll help both sides, so we had a, a motion on the floor, you had a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we'll, uh, we'll proceed next month, I'm sure we're looking at the fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
Yep. October fifteenth, yeah. Yes, yep, yep, the meeting's still open, we're just moving, moving the hearing to next, next one.
Okay. Good to go?
Yep, and you, you guys are good, good to thank, we got a little bit of business to take care of.
Sorry, thanks, guys.
Alright, you're welcome. Have a good, uh, have a good morning.
Yep.
Nothing, that's good, that's good. Um. That was a good catch, man.
Cause they actually, it's like, something like that, and they says, oh, if they, if they, they under it, it's, they have a big traffic on the job.
No, it's good, I mean, that's why you gotta go around with this and discuss it a little bit, cause things come out and that tax code helped a lot, and then noticing when he actually sent it, so it shows the crossover.
That was last, last meeting, the last one. They closed on, on meeting.
Yeah, isn't that crazy? I mean, that doesn't change. Have, have, really important, that one happened, so, um, Joe's got. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the zoning order review meeting minutes from August twenty eighth. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything we gotta wrap up on? Okay, so, um, alright, and can I? Make a motion to adjourn? Yes. Second, second, discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.